I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation, MHS Student Advisory.
I don't think I see any students for student advisory.
There she comes.
There she comes.
She's gonna represent all of us.
You're on, Allison.
Well, you're on.
You can talk about everything. Oh, right now?
Yeah.
You're up.
You're up.
Welcome.
Thank you. I guess I'm representing everyone. I'm gonna talk a little bit about being a captain of a team. I'm the, I'm one of the captains for the girls' cross-country team this year. And I'll be honest, it's hard work. And I never realized how difficult being a captain is until I became a captain. There's a lot of planning involved, what with captains' practices, pasta dinners, team bonding. Plus, we have an end-of-season alumni dinner coming up in two weeks. Oh, and senior night. Because although we didn't have any seniors on our team this year, the boys' team forgot senior night was a thing until the day before. So us girls' captains had to make seven seniors posters in under two hours. Yeah, it was stressful. And yes, being a captain is very stressful. But we're sure it won't be as bad next year since my co-captain and I were both juniors. And we'll be experts on all things captain next year, or so we hope. I think being a captain is great leadership experience for the real world and it's a great learning experience as well. I've gained a lot of leadership skills doing it. And I think I have an advantage being a junior captain because now I can use what I've learned through the rest of this year in my high school career and life, and I can use what I've learned this season for next season. And all in all, being a captain is a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun and it's a great experience.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Ms. Tennessee?
So one question, Allison. You mentioned the senior night or senior day, whatever, because of Triple E. What's your feeling? Because you're, you know, you had to do a lot this year. And obviously then you're gonna be a senior next year. And I'm curious as to your thoughts about that, that day or that designation. Does it, sometimes things feel like it's just too much and why are we doing all of this? Or is it something where you feel like it's a good way of just honoring these kids that have spent a lot of time and dedication, you know, doing things?
No, yeah, I-
Something different?
Yeah. I think it's a great way to recognize the people who have been on the team for four years. Or even if they haven't been on the team for four years, they are leaving high school and they're, it's their last season. And it's a great way to honor them and kind of recognize their achievements in that sport. And I'm excited for my senior night.
And, and thank you. I was curious because I think, having watched my own kids kind of go through that, I do think it's something that's important and, and nice to have that done. You know, to just honor those kids because in some cases that may be the end of, say, their sports career, if you will.
Yeah.
And, and it's a nice culmination of a lot of time and effort. So I'm, I'm pleased to hear you say that and hopefully not too prompted by asking you, but thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Hattie came in.
Good evening. I'm Hattie Parker. I'm the 11th, 10th grade representative. Originally, I was gonna talk about student council, but something more, I thought, a better opportunity to speak. I wanted to talk about the mock trial club. It's a new club at Marlboro High started by a student, Marissa Petty. It's with the teacher, Mr. Darnis. Over the summer, Marissa went to a program at Yale where she did a mock trial club. And she thought it would be a great idea to bring to Marlboro High. She thought it would be something really interesting. So she brought it up with the school and now it's a new club. We had our first meeting last Tuesday and it was really interesting. Basically, what the club is, it gives students an opportunity to see what a real criminal trial would be like. And there are some theatrical elements to it, you know, you get to act as maybe someone being persecuted or a persecutor or the, the jury. So I think it's really interesting. And something that was, stood out to me was that she was able to say, hey, this was something I was interested in. Marlboro High doesn't have a club like this. Let me see what I can do to bring this to Marlboro High. And she was able to do that. And we're really excited. We have a small group of us who are interested in doing it. Throughout the year, we're gonna go to some competitions. And of course, if we win those competitions against other schools, we'll have a chance to go further. But even if we don't, it's not like it's over. We can still spend the year, you know, getting better for next year, going over, just learning more and more as you go. It's something that you continue to learn at and get really good at. And even if you're not interested in like being a lawyer in the future, it's something, if you like debate or you've always just wanted to see how it goes, it's something that I just thought was really interesting. And I'm glad she got the opportunity to start the trial.
Questions from the committee? Go ahead, Angela.
This is great. I'm really excited about it. And I'm just curious about how you, if, how it seemed like process was for her to get the club up and off the ground.
I don't know too much about it. I know that she talked to Mr. Darnis because he does like, I think, social dress this class or he teaches some class that has to do with like laws and stuff. And he told her, I know that I've been interested in starting a club as well. So I know you just talked to Mr. Riley and you talk about the club you wanna start. And I think you just go from there and I think it has to get proofed through him. I'm not too sure about that.
Do you have some knowledge of this?
I need to add on to that. My friend just started a club. You have to get-
Can you just go up to the microphone?
Come on up so everyone can hear you.
I have a friend who just started a club as well. And he went around and he got, I think, he got 50 signatures from students. And then you have to have a teacher representing the club.
Right.
And then I think you can bring it to the principal.
Awesome. And what's that new club?
Music of Interest Club. So they play a bunch of like new music and fun music.
Okay, then.
Yeah.
Awesome. Great.
Anything else?
I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how it progresses. That's great. So am I.
Tennessee?
I just wanted to say I'm thrilled to hear about the mock trial thing. I learned about it through my nephews and they absolutely got a huge amount out of their involvement in schools down in Pennsylvania. And I think it's great that you guys are pushing that forward. It just, it's a welcome opportunity, even if you're not necessarily interested in law, public speaking, working with others from a collaboration standpoint. It's fabulous. So congratulations.
And civics. I mean, it's part of civics education.
Yeah.
It's great.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Hattie.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to start my update with enrollment as the issue. In my report, I did provide a chart that reflects that we are in an upswing of enrollment district-wide. Breaking this down further, we can show which areas are under the most stress right now with enrollment. The chart below shows we're at a peak for the K-5 students right now. It's the highest we've seen in 17 years worth of data. The trend is actually strong. So we're seeing what we call bubble grades or grades that have a higher enrollment than our usual at kindergarten one and four with 418, 409, and 425 students respectively. Strong elementary enrollments eventually will lead to higher enrollments at Whitcomb and the high school, even with our existing strong competition for choice alternatives in this area. So when I was looking at this, I tried to determine if there's other factors. So I did research the births in the city to determine if there was a rise or fall in the number of school-aged children that would be coming to the schools. I did provide that information below. The, the birth seems to have leveled off after 2009. It's leveled off to about 500 per year. So that doesn't seem to be a direct linkage. I can't say that births are X, so therefore our enrollment is Y. There doesn't seem to be a direct link between the two. And when we looked at all of this with our MSBA project, we did say that the proposed enrollment for a K-5 program, they had predicted 2,260 students for FY16 with an additional 95 students for growth and for projects that were already started within the city. So their total was about 2,355. We're currently at 2,468. So I don't see that any way that the MSBA or the district could have known or should have known because it's not tied to any specific area. I can't look at the births in the city or I can't look at any other factor and say that that would have led me to believe, to, to know that. So I agreed with the MSBA projection at the time. I signed off on it. But since that time, in the past two years, we've enrolled almost 200 more students over that time period. So to review this more in depth and to gain a better understanding of where enrollment is headed, I am gonna ask Mr. Diaz to procure a statistician to help us predict enrollment better than we can do ourselves and better than the reports that we've gotten from other vendors as well. You know, additionally, to cover the increased enrollment at the elementary level in next year's budget process, I will need to ask for an additional FTE to keep class sizes reasonable to elementary level. In addition to class sizes, we've now enrolled over 1,200 students accessing EL services. And we need to make sure that our staffing can accommodate the needs of the growing population at every level. So that's something that we're keeping an eye on. And my hope is that with Mr. Diaz procuring a statistician to help us, we can provide you with a better look at enrollment for the next, you know, five years and have an understanding of where we're, where we're going and where we're gonna need to provide resources. Just a scheduling conflict. On March 3rd and March 5th, this is something that I think the committee may wanna take action on and maybe at the next meeting, but to have a discussion tonight would be fine. On March 3rd, 2020, there's gonna be a presidential primary, which it says may require voting. I think it's going to require voting at the schools. We will have a half-day scheduled for May, for March 5th. When I first wrote this, I was proposing to switch to two days. I'm not sure I feel that way anymore. By the time I wrote this and by the time we, we did this, we may wanna consider actually closing on that day to make sure that we can, you know, not interfere with the election and primary system. Mainly to ease the, the burden of parking for people and, and look at that issue. So for me, I, I first thought about it as switching the two days. But the only issue would be is that kids would be in school during the mornings and the mornings seem to be pretty busy. So I'd probably wanna talk to the city clerk and get his opinion on it as well and see where, where they see the spikes in actual voting time. But it is something that we did not catch in last year's calendar review. There is gonna be a voting day. I think we do need to, you know, talk about it. I have two other items.
Did catch it, though? I think they changed it. Didn't they change and made Massachusetts go on Super Tuesday and we weren't in Super Tuesday before?
I don't care. For two years, I don't care.
So I think even if we did catch it, they may have pulled a fast one on us because I think it was-
Yeah, I, I think we gotta talk about it.
Yeah.
And anything we do, obviously, it's gonna be an impact. We're gonna have to talk to all of our labor groups as well.
Yeah.
Because if we move a day, then we take a day off. We're gonna have to make up that date at the end of the year. So it's, it's a bigger decision. But I wanna give notice as soon as we can to parents because people have already probably started to look at childcare issues for those types of days. So-
If we can plan a snow day that day, then we don't have to negotiate it. Get it off. And we could still have the elections.
It did snow briefly today. So it's a great reminder for everyone to make sure their contact information is up to date so they can receive the snow calls. Just two other quick things that didn't make my report I just wanted to highlight. December 3rd at 7:00 PM, we're thrilled to be able to, in conjunction with the Marlboro Alliance for Prevention and the Boys and Girls Club of Metro West, we're bringing Chris Sullivan to the district. He's a former New England Patriot. And he's gonna be discussing his struggles with, with substance abuse. He's gonna be at the Whitcomb School during the day. And he's agreed to do a night presentation for parents. So again, I, I did send this out to everybody today. Our social media presence will back this up and start working on it tonight. But I want as many people as possible to, to hold that date. And we're just thrilled that we're able to, to have Mr. Sullivan come and speak to our community. The fourth item, just wanted to just throw a shout-out to the Trashin' Show. It was fantastic. Everyone did a great job. And just thanks to Roberta once again. She just goes above and beyond and just fantastic. I, I had a great time watching all of the different styles that the young ladies made and they just did a fantastic job. And that's my report for tonight.
Yeah, just two points. Chris Sullivan, I heard him speak before, really down-to-earth, great guy. And I think everyone that goes will enjoy listening to him. On the enrollment, I just want everyone to know that even if we were to predict that we were gonna pick up another three or four or 500 kids, the SBA would not have allowed us to build a bigger school. I mean, we were locked in. So we tried to convince them to go a little bit larger and they had no interest in allowing us to do that. They have their numbers and that's really what we're stuck building. So I think we'll figure out how to deal with it. Obviously, there's been a pretty decent-sized flux over the last few years. But, you know, that, it, it is, it is a big number. But the other thing is, it also goes to show that we do have a lot of families moving into the city.
Yes.
We are the most affordable city in the area. So when they're looking to move in this vicinity, they choose Marlboro. And, and so that, another thing that reflects on our population, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else? Tennessee?
Thank you. So on the enrollment numbers, is it possible that for our next meeting, we could see where our class sizes are falling?
Mm-hmm.
And then as well, knowing that we were not in a position of working with the SBA and, and changing that size of the school, are we, knowing that it takes time, are we in a position, though, that we really should start looking at, you know, what's our, what's our next option?
Fire station. Seriously, I mean, it's gonna be a while.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a while.
No, agreed. But, I mean, we've just been through it. It takes four, five, six years. So, you know, I, I don't say that like knocks something else off the plate. But I, you know, I'm, I'm interested in long-term planning so that we can not be under a crunch any more than necessary.
And I think that's why I, for short money, I think for just a couple grand, we can hire a statistician.
Right.
Who might be able to give us a better idea of our enrollment. So that way, we can try to at least plan for the next couple of years to make sure that we can handle what we need to do. So, yeah, I agree with you 100%. I mean, we, we need to look at this from the short term. How do we deal with the immediate? But also, what is the long-term plan for us to be able to accommodate all the students in the city?
Yeah. I, I, I'm, short and long-term would be great. So. And the March 3rd, 5th issue, assuming also we've looped in or we're going to be looping in police since we normally have their presence within the school districts. When we've done some, like when we did the local municipal election, there's normally police presence there.
Well, that's part of the question of whether or not we have school the day or not have school.
Gotcha.
And, you know, that I was, I was very happy and I sat down with, when we had the last election with students in the buildings, Chief Georgie was at the meeting and he was-
They were great.
He was great. And he provided an officer in every school and I think they did a wonderful job. But I, I don't know. This is not my area of expertise on elections and polling. I don't know if it's gonna be a lot more people who are voting for a presidential primary or, or what. I, I just don't know. So I, I wanted to bring it up as a point that we can talk about. And maybe for the next meeting, have a discussion about it and make a vote. I just wanna give parents as much notice as possible and also loop in everybody else that needs to be looped in.
Thank you.
Hattie, any other questions?
Mr. McLaughlin, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering location of the Chris Sullivan event.
It's gonna, I'm sorry. It's gonna be at the Whitcomb Auditorium on December 3rd at 7:00 PM. And Mr. Sullivan is going to be at the Whitcomb School during the day. And he's going to be addressing students. So again, just wanna say thank you to Boys and Girls Club Metro West. They're actually funding this and making this happen. It's a great partnership and also the Marlboro Alliance for Prevention. We continue to try to get education and resources in the hands of everybody. So.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
Thank you. I attached the November 5th Professional Development Choice Catalog to my report. In addition to these choices, selected teachers were scheduled for some targeted professional development sessions. For example, co-teaching at Marlboro High School and Teach Town for Pathways and Connections staff. Additionally, all K through four classroom teachers and some special educators attended a workshop on STEAM. In October, the K through four lead teachers participated in professional development sessions led by a WPI trainer. Last year's K through eight STEAM integration planning team identified elementary training and integration of STEAM-based projects into the new K through four science units as priority areas. To support this implementation, all K through four teachers will also be scheduled in another targeted session in January. On that day, their grade-level lead teachers will share their first new science units. Each of these units will include a STEAM challenge. Once presented, these units and STEAM challenges will be implemented before the end of the school year. Planning our professional development days is a group effort. Supervisors, directors, building leaders, and central office work as a team to offer staff meaningful professional development. The Director of Student Services offered multiple workshops for paraeducators and behavior technicians on the November Professional Development Day. Support staff joined teachers in sessions regarding mental health, trauma, Teach Town, and mindfulness. Other scheduled, scheduled sessions were designed only for support staff. These workshops focused on strategies to meet individual learners' needs in the classroom and strategies to fade adult supports in building student independence. Thank you.
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Minutes of September 24th.
Move to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries? Public participation? Seeing none? Action items, FY20 Acoruno trip?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as we do every year, we are putting forward the list of dates for the future Acoruno trip. And we've had great success. And I, I don't think I need to speak at length about how important this is for the district. But also that it has just become a wonderful opportunity for so many students. And hearing from those students and how this is somewhat of a life-changing event for them. We just really wanna support this moving forward. And I give it my full support to continue our relationship with Acoruno. And I asked the school committee to, once again, approve the upcoming dates for travel next year. I don't know, Ms. Patel, if you'd like to add anything. As the coordinator, Especial, you've done a wonderful job with it. I just wanna thank you publicly for that. Thank you.
You need a mic.
Thank you to all for this year's trip, for making it a success. The students will be here next school commencing, for a presentation. And we'll do, give a video. Again, they'll be coming here in school year, which is a quick turnaround, but much more meaningful for students.
Can I, do you mind if I just ask, Ruth Bullock, last time? Did, how did, the trips being back-to-back the way they were? What do you, how do you think that model, does it just continue on the momentum? Is it-
It does. I will get, just carries everything through. It's a little bit exhausting, but some forward planning now will help.
Yeah.
Ms. Ryan?
I just noticed on the dates, I, I'm sure this probably is, you're, you're aware that, that Tuesday that they're here, the third would be the presidential election. And potentially, we wouldn't have any school that day. I don't know if that affects your planning.
That happened this time around. There was the-
Local.
Local elections.
Yes.
And so we just take them off. One of the requirements is that the chaperones see the students in the second or third day. So that actually makes it easier for planning for trip.
Okay, great.
Yeah, Ms. Tennessee?
And I just was gonna say, I thought it was great actually having the kids back coming during the school year as opposed to the summer situation. Because I think it just helps for more peer understanding of what the program is. Otherwise, it's very hard for other students that aren't aware of the program to actually get a lot of vision of, about what's going on. So I, I really wanted to thank you very much for all of the hard work that I know you and others put into trying to get that changed. I think it really helps to make it much more impactful, not only for the students coming, but for actually the whole student body at Whitcomb.
I will add, this year, every year, we have 12 students, 12 spots.
Ish.
This year, we have 32 applicants.
Wow.
So we hope that this will keep the momentum going. That's, it's been a long time since that happened.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Good job. entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose? Carries? Festival Disney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, again, support the future travel. This is, we're in FY, we're in '19 right now. Jonathan is asking for, this is 2021. So we really like to plan ahead when we send kids to the Festival Disney. This, again, has been a trip that has been ongoing for some time. There's hands-on clinics. There's lots of feedback that our musicians get. Just a wonderful opportunity. And I appreciate that they're working their hardest to make sure that there are fewer days out of school and that this lands over holiday weekends as well. So again, I, I give it my recommendation for you to approve this future, future travel in April of 2021 for the music department to continue their traveling to Festival Disney.
Now Allison will be a senior, so she'll get to go.
entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Tennessee?
My only comment to add in here is I think Mr. Rosenthal obviously is doing his pre-planning. But I think also because of all of the fundraising efforts that go on to make sure that it is available to all kids to really get that fundraising help. I think that's why he also really wanted to put it out there. We're so families really understood that their kids have plenty of time to really work together to try and make sure they have the money to do this. So, so. And if you, family and community members here, this is really why. It's these big trips that sometimes kids would never have the opportunity to do without the fundraising. So, thank you.
And that reminds me to thank the MPS Music Association for their continued support of these trips, all of the students in the music program and everything they do on a daily basis.
Thank you. On the motion to approve, all those in favor? Oppose? Carries? Aspen Valley Collaborative Quarterly Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just an update from AVC to the school committee. I, I provide four updates throughout the year. So if you have a chance to look over it, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them. And I would probably bring them back to Aspen Valley, but some of them I might be able to answer myself. But they are hard at work, working on certain capital projects. Looking especially at the building here in Marlboro, looking at a, a platform lift and a roofing project. And they're also looking for space. Their, one of their leases at the Shrewsbury School District is coming to an end and they'll be looking for space to house that program. We don't have any space, so we can't, can't help them. So.
So the, the roof lifting, is that at Begala?
I'm sorry. There's two things. It's a roof, it- I'm sorry. There's two things. It's a roof, it's a roof that's being done, and they also need a platform lift for ADA accessibility. Sorry, it's two different projects.
At Bigelow?
Yes. I wanna make sure. It's the, is that Orchard Street?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I noticed that their office is actually also in Marlboro.
Yes, they, and they have space over, is that Elm Street, I believe?
Lord Road, which goes off of Elm.
Right by the Lord Road near Elm Street, that they, they own that space. And they'll, they're looking to buy additional space potentially in Marlboro. So...
That's nice. The one thing that just stood out to me, the first sentence, it says legislative update new collaborative law signed by Governor Baker in January 2020. It's either presumptuous or wrong, which... Did he sign it in January 2019?
I can't tell you if he did or not.
Does someone have a crystal ball?
I will bring that back. I think it's a different, yeah.
Any other questions? Attain a motion to accept and place on file. Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. All those in favor? Pose. Carries. Reports to school committees, subcommittees. Senator C.
Thank you. The policy subcommittee is back hard at work with a huge agenda ahead of us now. So on the, on this Friday, we're gonna get together, and it's, I'm just really, we're trying to not only get to policies that specifically have needs, we're working on through updating, just 'cause we need to really get on that on a regular basis. So if anyone has something specific that they feel that we need to tackle, please let me know. Probably won't get on Friday's agenda, but it will come in up, so, thank you.
Do, we do have something from Mr. Riley?
Something from him?
Yeah.
I have the...
I haven't looked at it yet, so my fault. I'll look through it.
I have the current...
I just know that he had something that he needed.
It's his, I have the current policy in the packet that went out, and he's gonna be attending a portion of the meeting, so we can have the discussion right there. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other committees? Seeing none. Members forum. Senator C.
So I'll make an announcement. Dessert Theater is the end of next week. So that would be on Friday night and Saturday evening. And the twenty-second and the twenty-third, and I believe it's a seven o'clock start. So come on down. You don't have to have dessert being at the theater. But you can.
But why wouldn't you?
But why wouldn't you? And I know they would love to have attendance, and I believe you can purchase tickets ahead of time. And maybe I'll get the superintendent link, and they can put it up somewhere, so.
Where is that being held?
It's gonna be at the high school in the Little Theater, so thank you.
Great.
That's it.
Any other members? Ms. Ryan.
Don't forget, this Thursday night is parent-teacher conferences at the high school. And during that time, the MHS All-Nighter Committee is putting on a vendor and craft night from six to eight-thirty. Anyone can attend. You don't have to have a student at the high school. It is being held at the high school in the foyer. There is no cost. There is also a raffle and a bake sale. So come on by and shop.
Anyone else? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and...
Before we adjourn, just wondering if anybody can step in for Ms. Matthews and sign the warrant tonight.
I will be more than happy to sit down with you afterwards.
Thank you.
How about that?
Excellent.
Thanks.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Pose. Carries. Thank you very much.